Hello, everybody.
Hello. How's the weather out there in front of City Hall, Ben?
Beautiful today, as always. Wish I were out there today.
It actually is pretty nice.
To go over and tell somebody to stop at that stop sign.
I was at City Hall yesterday and some guy blew through there at at least forty miles an hour. Didn't even tap his brakes. Well.
Well, we're looking at the budget if we could find some room to be able to pay Ben to be there just a little more often, maybe we could improve that. Kind of.
Give me my school crossing guard flag back from when I was in fifth grade. Stand up there.
I think we'll have to give him some ticket books too, so that when he sees offenders, he has something other than just the flag.
Good to have a fellow traffic patrol person. I was in traffic patrol at Mariloma Elementary School in San Francisco when I was a kid. We had a neat little white belt that kind of came across horizontally, then a belt and little like military little yellow cap hat to wear. It was a.
Yeah, my my belt in St. Paul, Minnesota was a leather thing with a with an actual looked like a badge, you know. I felt so official.
Yeah, no.
Oh, Ben.
I've been dragging my feet just a minute here to see. And there's Mr. All right, we are all present. So with that, I'd like to welcome everybody to this joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for today, Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. And this is our strategic planning special meeting. So this is more of a workshop than our normal meetings. So we'll begin now that we've called the meeting to order to ask if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here, thank you. And before we move onward into our meeting, I can ask the city manager if he would be kind enough to introduce everybody else on the staff here to the public tonight.
For mayor, members of the council, so tonight and myself, obviously, city manager, Damian Obed, presenting tonight with me is Angela Quarter, our Director of Administration Services. We also have Craig Scott, our Director of Public Works, city engineer. We have Noah Houche, our Community Development Director. Michael Parrish, our police chief, and then finally, but it's not last, Kevin Patterson, our deputy city clerk.
Thank you, city manager, Obed. Okay, this is normally the time I would open this to public comment. I am seeing no attendees on the attendee list at this point, so I'm going to withhold from doing that. I will open at other points in the study session or afterward if I do see participants. So we will certainly keep our eyes open for that. So having then completed the public comment portion, let's move to the study session. I'll ask for staff to begin the presentation for us tonight.
You, mayor, members of the council. So before I hand it off to Angela to do the slideshow that'll walk us through the budget itself. I just wanted to point out in the packet, there's goals and objectives that were updated. So this is something that we committed to bringing back at the general fund study session. And in the packet, it's highlighted. So the goal, it's now goal two, it's the actively work to mitigate and adapt to the impact of climate change, including wildfire preparation adaptation in accordance with Dr. City Council policies. So the the what was formerly objective is now a goal. And then the red line addition of including wildfire preparation adaptation was a change to that objective to broaden it beyond just well, to call out that specific impact related to climate change, which is unique to how unique it is, but it's fairly localized. It's a localized impact that we've been dealing with. So just wanted to call that out. And if there's any further comment or edits that anyone wants to make to that.
I'm not seeing any hands popping up at the moment, Mr. Obed, so I think we're good to go forward.
Great. Okay, mayor. So at this point, I'll hand it off to Angela. You want to take it away?
Yes. So good evening, mayor, council members and fellow staff and community participants that might be viewing this in the future or joining us at a later point in time. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing the initial budget drafts for the general fund revenues and expenses, as well as the special revenue funds revenues and expenses. Included within this within this study is our tentative budget schedule, a short economic overview and description of what assumptions are being used, followed by our detail on the general fund and then special revenue funds. And I do want to point out that within the agenda packet are some key workbooks that support this material. So in packet pages forty-one to fifty-six are the worksheets for general funds. Packet pages fifty-seven to seventy-five are those worksheets around the special revenue funds. So our budget cycle begins with the strategic planning session, as Damian just described, which took place in February fifteenth. During that session, council reviewed the goals and objectives as we just amended revised finalized. And these objectives were then taken by the departments for proposed projects for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. That input was used by the departments to draft their budgets to evaluate how they were going to meet those project needs. And that is what is being presented tonight. This April nineteenth, and then we're going to follow this up with the enterprise funds and capital projects to be studied on May seventeenth. And hopefully, this all bundles itself up with a wrap-up session and adoption of the budget on June fourteenth. So when budgeting, forecasting and assumptions are a big piece of what we have to take into consideration. So in budgeting specifically for Katati's revenues, there's quite a few assumptions that need to be evaluated. We try our hardest to use the best available information we can obtain, but there are always uncertainties. You might be very well aware that those current uncertainties include things like inflation and supply issues, specifically around like things like sales tax. While sales tax is based on a percentage of each sale, it would mean that therefore our revenue should increase as sales cost of sales increase, cost of revenue should, you know, it should increase proportionally. But we don't know what impacts there is going to be on the supply side or people on the demand side. Will people buy less? Because the cost of those products are increasing more. So knowing that full impact was always taken into consideration and we have to sometimes use our specialists from HDL to kind of give us a better, deeper look on what we should anticipate for these. Other and we do also make sure that overall our estimates are conservative. And that's going to be the word of the day. And you might want to just tick every single time I use the word conservative and have a grand tall like tally at the end of the the presentation because it is what we aim for with our budget processes to always be conservative. And so overall, Katati's revenues again are a little bit different. We have a majority of our base in the general fund specifically is that sales tax and measure S, sales tax component. And those have those other moving pieces at this point in time. And and later on in the presentation, we will also talk about how that significant piece of our revenue being based on sales tax. We don't have that transient occupancy tax yet and those other pieces of taxes that might bring us a little bit more diversification within our revenue streams of the general fund. So I also like to take a look as we're looking forward and projecting out, we also have to take a second to take a look back and what's happened to our revenues throughout history, our history here in the city. And this is just a snapshot of the last twenty years and the different pieces of things that have happened during those time periods that have impacted our revenues. So in the last twenty-plus years, these general fund revenues have increased over two hundred percent with impacts on growth primarily due to the great recession, which took sorry, which took which caused revenues to decrease from two thousand eight and didn't really recover until two thousand fourteen. So that that really hit us hard. And some of you are here and there is a big impact to the city. So the fact that we've come so far in such a short amount of time to make that bounce back is is significant, but not that we shouldn't look towards what impacts could there be in the future if we have some like event happen. So how do we build out assumptions for our expenses? So it really is a balancing act. We aren't a for-profit business. We don't give back money for taxes that we've received. We all have, we provide the services to our citizens. And so it's making sure that balance with our revenues and the services that we are trying to achieve for our citizens are in balance. So making sure that our contract services versus operating expenses and that service level that we want to provide are in line with what revenues we can achieve within any given year. I know sometimes we we shoot for the stars and we want to provide the best possible service, the best newest technology. You know, the best possible contractor to do the job, but we all have to keep that in balance with what we actually can afford. And aligned with that is also our liabilities management. What's our cost in the future going to look like? And we took a big step in mitigating that this year when we took into consideration those bonds issuance for the capital projects and the UAL. So those significant impacts to our future reserves balances are are now going to be more level payments into the future that we can better manage and allow for better savings and opportunities in the future. So some key outstanding items that are still unknown at this point in time for assumptions are really our insurance costs. So those are based on estimates we have right now. We don't have any final numbers. They are significant. But we do again believe they're conservative and have them included currently, but they are still uncertain. And then we do have one negotiate, one MOU that is not completed yet. We haven't, it's still in negotiations currently. So that would be an outstanding item that is not included within this current proposed budget. So that's it really a citywide. And that it's going to affect again, you're going to see those same items come up when we talk about enterprise funds. But really, let's get into what is in the general fund. And really more specifically, first of all, what is a general fund? And why is it so important? So the general fund is the primary fund used for the government entity. This is used to record all the resource inflows, which were the revenues, as well as the outflows that are not for a special revenue purpose. So they're not for a specific use that the city has deemed them and reserved them for this other specific use. So these are the general purpose funds. And the activities that are being paid are for administrative and operational tasks of the overall governmental entity. And they include all of our core services, including the police, public works, recreation, community development, city management, administrative services, city council, and any non-infrastructure relating to utility utilities. So it's the other infrastructure, our streets and so forth. But that's going to be talked on in our next study session. So overall highlights around the general fund. So we are going to be meeting that minimum reserve. I know it's not included in the agenda packet currently because we don't have the finalized numbers for transfers out for capital projects. But this current budget with our estimates for those, we will make sure we meet that twenty-five percent and exceed that twenty-five percent required reserve per our resolution. And the revenue increases from twenty-one, twenty-two are about approximately seven percent. There is a slight decrease between twenty-one, twenty-two estimate and the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed. And again, this gets down to that conservatism. We do have plans for that and we'll get into a little bit deeper dive in that a little bit later. The additional discretionary payment to CalPERS for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is the most significant item within our operating expenses. And we will again, we'll have a specific slide where we will talk specifically more about that. The staffing cost is estimated to increase approximately ten percent in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. This is because we do budget at full employment. So every position that is budgeted for is filled for the full year. There is no turnover. Everyone's here full time. And that is a big thing that doesn't happen in our real world. Hopefully someday we'll have that problem. But that's how we do budget them. Salaries did increase that four percent. We have all the negotiated MOUs and step increases included with the budget, except for the one MOU that is currently being negotiated. And we do have that ADP adjustment for twenty-two or twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four is when we will actually see the impact of our additional discretionary payments. So that's going to be a couple of years down the road where we will see our unfunded liability payments actually decrease. So it's going to be a couple of years before we actually see that change affect our budgets. Other cost changes, again, that insurance estimate as well as our contract services increases. So overall for inflows, they're budgeted to decrease slightly, less than one percent or thirty-five thousand compared to our estimated actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two. But the this is a conservative estimate of our revenues. And they still show a total of over ten million dollars for the fiscal year. We are working very hard with our sales tax team to get new revised sales tax numbers for the budget year, but we really expect this to be in line at at minimum to where we will be for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And here is just showing the comparative revenues by revenue type. I'm just a very visual person, so I like to kind of have a graphical representation of that you can see the changes over each other in a smaller fashion. So the budget in light yellow is the proposed budget and the estimated actuals are presented in the green. And again, this is my graphic that I do like to include because it really shows the importance of our revenues within the general fund and the proportion, just the huge proportion that the sales tax is. So for our proposed budget year, approximately sixty percent of the city's budget is for sales tax and half of that is for measure S. And twenty percent is for property tax. So it really shows our the importance of our continued economic diversity or economic development strategy and why it's important for us to kind of diversify that risk around having that primary revenue source. So highlights for each revenue source, if you'd like to follow along with the detail, the worksheets for the detail are on packet pages forty-four and forty-six. So property tax projections, they do include the two and a half or two percent assessors applied CPI. The increase, it really is primarily due to new development and Casting Ranch is really a driving factor of our increased property taxes with a total change around six percent. Sales tax projected revenue has a minor increase of two percent, but even though it's just two percent, it's a it's a nice change. We still have that uncertainty, what's the inflation factor going to be for our sales tax? And offsetting that with possible decreases in the Amazon distribution center, we're still getting estimates on the total impact we should see from that from our county pool portion of that IRS adjustment. The major industry groups within Katati still continue to be that building, construction, industry, fuel service stations, food and drug, and then again, that county pool. So as you might have seen within the detail revenues, the other tax is primarily driven by cannabis business tax. And we're estimating it at just over seven hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And this is due to hopefully a new retail operation starting within the city and their new sales tax remission or tax remission for business tax on that. The other licenses, permits and franchises, there's really no significant change, just a small increase with the business license tax. The rent decrease, we do have the end of the Smart Train Station Depot lease that is coming up. And additionally, we have other agencies. So within our other agencies, we have our contract, the public safety with SSU. So we do have an estimated contract kind of plugged into our revenues currently for budget purposes that is currently under negotiations with that contract. So we will have updated numbers on that when we do come back to council for that. Charges for services, this is probably the biggest change where we it's uncertain what projects are going to move through and move forward. We do have a steady level of permits and other projects we we can plan on, but currently those are set to decrease specifically within public works and community development due to the completion of Casting Ranch. So they have been fairly significant last two years due to Casting Ranch development. And that's now ceasing as they finalize that. Now we'll move it over to property tax. And the charges for services for police charges were. And the charges for services for police charges were continuing to see increases there as we move into a post COVID more active enforcement, traffic safety, those kinds of things coming back online. We are kind of seeing, hoping to see more of that and that's included within the budget. Other revenues, you might notice that we did move the ARP, the ARPA funds, which was the 1.4 million. We are actually set to receive 1.7 million in those funds from the federal government. And those will be in the special, kind of a grants fund, which will come with the capital projects fund. So you'll kind of see where that's now moved into. That way we can clearly report out everything to the federal government with it in a separate fund. And other changes for other revenues are really just administrative reimbursements. Those are always unknown or uncertain. We don't know when they're going to come in, when we're going to have a specific projects for those reimbursements. So those are planned in there accordingly. So moving on to expenditures or outflows. So as discussed previously, the city made huge strides in decreasing our unfunded liabilities by paying down $6 million in an additional discretionary payment or an ADP to CalPERS. Of this, approximately $4.8 million was allocated to the general fund. These allocations of costs are based on the FTE allocations of the members within the separate safety and miscellaneous groups. So these are consistent with how the cost is allocated also for our financial reporting for Gasky 68. And that's where we do our adjustments to show our financial statements on, on actual, sorry, not the cash basis, but on the accrual method where we do have to book the liability. So it is consistent for that reporting purposes. Additionally, we still paid our lump sum payment for 2122. And so that is, so we're kind of additional paid CalPERS, both in a lump sum for the full year as well as the ADP. And then in 2223, we're still going to make another lump sum payment of 1.2 million dollars as we wait for that actuarial adjustment from CalPERS for the ADP in 2324. Other highlights include continued increase in the cost for contract services, expected around 6% and this is due to negotiated increases that are included within contracts or increases in competition for some of those contracts. We just know we're not going to be able to get the same contractor for the same rate. And so there's a little bit of an increase that we know we, we should include within those contracts. And as stated previously, insurance for the city is expected to increase by approximately 48%. And it's primarily driven by market uncertainty. Overall remainder of expenses are just conservatively budgeted, budgeted based on the full time staffing. And that's just how we run that. And so it includes all negotiated MOUs, not to reiterate everything over and over again, but that does make a significant difference. So I do want to point out, first of all, in the agenda packet that was published, that first column for the adopted somehow grabbed extra numbers. The individual numbers within the column are correct. The total somehow got misstated. So it is what is presented here is the 8.5 million dollars. So it'll make a little bit more on a comparison basis, a lot, a lot better understanding. You can take entire numbers back and forth. So here is the unadjusted comparative outflows from the adopted, the estimated, proposed and those changes. However, the individual numbers, though they're correct, it really doesn't tell the right picture because that $4.8 million is stuck within each one of those departments. So we wanted to provide the, excuse me. Let me go back to there. The adjusted for the UAL ADP. So when you look at it comparatively, looking at this picture, so there is the slight changes for each of the departments. However, removing that $4.8 million change makes them consistent over time. And really that is the budget that we are proposing as a consistent budget with minimal changes for the timeframe. So overall percentage of revenues breakout, you see it consistent with our FTE allocation. The police make up 53%, followed by public works with 16%, CD with 12% and the remaining is 19% for the rest of the department. And though the city managers and admin services only attribute to just about 11% of the general fund operating departmental expenditures, we maintain the majority of the allocated contract services, which are allocated of course citywide. So there's a summary of the detailed list of allocated contract services. And that's included, the details included on packet page 56. So we just thought it was important to show and detail out what all of those individual allocated contracts really are and what we're paying for, including the technology data management, our auditing services, our other insurance, of course, is included in there. Other departments work more on specifics, special projects and as such have non-allocated contracts. So the community development contracts primarily are made up of professional services for landscape review, plan check, planning and sequo support, as well as design review. They also have special projects included within their contract services, which include the bike ped master plan as well as the Santeri Way specific plan. The public works department includes professional services for the impacts of the AB4 as well as general contracts for consulting and the flooding ranch management. The police are primarily focused on the cost of the consortium, which is their cost of technology in the police department. So hot topic for this session besides the ADP really is the insurance. So we are a part of CERA, formerly REMEF. And they provide our general liability, property, workers comp, auto and earthquake insurance. We have received, they've said, initial estimates from CERA for these budgeting purposes, but have yet to receive any formal balances or amounts that they're projecting. While these numbers show a significant increase and they're, we, we also feel like they're, they are, that we and also CERA are being conservative in their initial estimates that they're sending out. And I can turn this over to Damian for additional information as to what is included with CERA's estimates right now. Or we can wait, we'll go through the rest of the departmental highlights and then open up the questions.
Yeah, thanks Angela. So I'll just touch on this for a second because like Angela said, aside from the ADP payment, which you know, shows up as a single large kind of payment in time. This is the other, I would say, significant change that draws, certainly draws your attention when you look at the budget. And also as Angela stated, we haven't gotten the final numbers from CERA yet because the brokers are not ready to give us the final numbers. They're, they're essentially waiting until the last minute and the last possible minute possible that, that they can provide numbers to their clients because they're, I don't know, I don't know if they're waiting for some big natural disaster to happen so they can adjust it one more time before they give us the final numbers or what, but. The number that Angela had cited earlier, the 52%, just as an example, that's the liability program. And, and when I say CERA, I'm talking, you know, 50 plus cities and towns in California. So when you're, when you're looking at these numbers, this has nothing to do with us specifically. It has everything to do with the insurance market generally. So this is basically all of us, all of the CERA members are looking at similar increases. And liability 52%, that was the number that was cited earlier. And just for context, and you know, council member Moore maybe could add some more, some more color to this when I'm done, but, but as far as liability goes, one of the main cost drivers there. The insurance, the people in the insurance business say that it's social inflation is what's driving this primarily. So juries are just awarding bigger settlements. And not just like slightly bigger settlements, but like dramatically bigger settlements than has been the trend the last, you know, 20, 30, 40 years. That insurance companies use to model their future expenses. So that's one of the primary drivers for liability. Workers comp, so happily workers comp is only like a 3% increase, which is essentially inflation-ish. The property program, so that's, you know, physically insuring structures and that sort of thing. That is a 29% increase this year and it's been a multi-year series of increases like that. This is just the latest increase and this is because insurance is global, it's a global industry. And so they ensure, every insurer spreads their risk, not only between different types of insurance programs, but also geographically in different places so that they don't have any one big loss, any one big error at a time. So what we're seeing in the property program is that there's, you know, giant weather events, flooding events, hurricanes, cyclones, fires in the west coast of the US. Basically events that are, that are far more expensive than anything in, in their, in their predictive models. So insurance, as you probably know, they base, they basically predict the future based on past performance. And so they have pretty sophisticated models looking at the last, you know, you know, 20, 30 years of claims. And so they predict the future based on that. And what they've found in the property program is that their future predictions are wildly off because the kind of claims that they're seeing globally, whether, you know, mostly weather related events, natural disasters are far more expensive and far more widespread and frequent than they've predicted. So they're, they're basically trying to catch up in their predictive models to the new reality that they're seeing. And so that's what's driving the cost in the property program. And then some other sort of lesser kind of program, those are the three main programs. Some, some lesser programs, these are pass-throughs, but this is a, I think they're kind of illustrative. Cybersecurity insurance is going up 80% because people are getting hacked and it's incredibly expensive. It's becoming very, a very expensive claim or very, very, they're becoming, the claims are becoming very expensive and the line of insurance is becoming a very expensive line of insurance, which used to be something, I think, for insurance companies, which was just a moneymaker, you know, and after line they'd add some cybersecurity coverage in there and they're finding they're, they're losing money dramatically in that line of coverage. So they've increased that, as I said, 80%. So that's just some highlights in the insurance world. That's what, that's what we're seeing. And again, like I started saying at the outset, this has nothing to do with us or anything unique to us. It's just the insurance industry generally. So. You know, I don't know, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it or before we move on.
Since we took a stop here and this is an area of concern, I'll see if any of the council has any questions or comments at this point. Council member Moore, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. Hey man, you, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. It's the, the cyber and the property and the liability on that. That have just increased tremendously. The, in, in the Palmer Conference a couple of weeks back, they talked about what the typical annual losses are globally and they've kind of doubled in the last several years. So the insurance industry is pretty much set for 2 billion and it's been like four billions. So, you know, they've got to make that money back because part of that is they've got to pay those CEO bonuses. And, you know, they can't do that if they don't have any money. So there's, that's part of that. And then of course the cyber and the ransomware and the holding entities hostage has exacerbated that situation. I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not seeing my other colleagues' hands up. Just in general, I wanted to ask for the average person at home watching this and frankly for myself too. When we hear the industry as a group indicate that these, you know, an increase of roughly 50% is due largely just to social inflation, basically increased jury settlements, heavy losses. That certainly sounds logical, but there's that old saying about trust but verify. And I'm curious how end users, even larger end users, such as governments are supposed to verify this. So the industry will say it's just inflation. But I wonder how do we have a sense of what their true rate of return is? As councilman Moore suggested, there's still, we really don't know how careful they're being in their own budgeting. And I'm just curious, is the idea that in theory this is handled by competitive pressures that to remain competitive, people will try to keep their costs down? Because I don't know if that really seems to be the case.
So I, well, just say from the, you know, and again, I'm sure John has some more, some more backgrounds. He's, he sits on the board there, but. From a CERA perspective, I know the conversation has been pretty much every year, like what level of insurance do we retain locally? In other words, what, what's our layer, our CERA layer versus what's the excess insurance layer? So these, these increases I cited were excess insurance rates. And so I don't know how much, how, how transparent or opaque the insurers are themselves with their, with their financials. But we, you know, we are working in a competitive environment. So I think that's, my understanding is CERA is relying on, you know, getting multiple bids from different insurers to try to get the best coverage and also playing with how much do we retain locally? Sort of self-funded versus how much do we get excess insurance for? We try to get that sweet spot. So that doesn't exactly answer your question, but that's.
I, I think gives me the best sense. It is a difficult thing to know, but hopefully market pressure will still continue to try and at least, if not solve that issue, at least round off some of the rougher edges of it. Thank you. Anything else from the rest of the council? If not, I think we are good to go ahead here.
Mayor Lammon?
Let's see. And there's your hand. Council member Moore, please go ahead.
I was just going to say nationally is one of the least regulated industries and many of the insurance products are regulated state by state by state. So you don't necessarily have a uniform approach coming from the federal government on how to try to contain these rates. And since they're all private companies or, or, you know, publicly traded companies, they, their information on their profit losses and what their real true losses are, what their expenses are, are difficult to obtain at best.
Yeah, that, that was my sense of it. Thank you for giving me more of an insider view.
Certainly.
Thank you so much for providing that. So we'll just dig in a little bit more on the other peripheral, non additional discretionary payment on insurance, even though you'll see insurance hits every single department when we talk about what's causing a driver in the expenses for each department. So starting off with city council, there is that just continued allocation of shared indirect costs, utilities, PG&E, everything else are expected to continue to increase. Significant other expenses include dues and subscriptions and that allocated insurance. The city's managers department includes the following changes of that public information services is continued to be held within the city managers department. The other expenses do include the election expense. We're estimating it around 25,000 for this fiscal, coming fiscal year. And just an item of note, when you're looking at comparative in the detailed budgets, that 2019, 2020, the city manager's office held that one-time COVID expense as we pushed out, you know, the tents and, and other pieces where we got that funding in from the state. And so that's where that expense for COVID funding went to. And so that's looks kind of like a little bit of a off number for their department in that year. For the admin services department, there is budgeted one additional staff for a staff accountant as well as we're going to continue to budget for an intern and that recruiting expense to try and get an intern back into our department. We do also have budgeted increased fiscal fees as they are a percentage of the revenue. As they are a percentage of the revenues, we do have to pay the state for sending us our money. And so we are expecting those to increase. The community development department has an increase of approximately one part-time staff. And they do have increased contract services that we talked about continue, which are correlate to that continued new housing element projects, the update bike ped master plan and the Santero Way specific plan projects. The public works department includes one, other expenses include the dues and subscriptions and again, the allocated insurance is a big piece of the other expenses. And they also have that operational funding for Rhonda Floody Ranch, which was at 125,000 a year. For police services, these include the continued investment in technology through that public safety consortium costs, which are expected to increase. The additional cost of training and the correlated overtime. So as we get farther away from COVID, we're doing more and more training for our police department. And thus we also have additional overtime as we have coverage for those officers or dispatchers who are out at training. We do have significant other expenses that include allocated insurance, recruiting, small tools and equipment and vehicle fuel. Recreation has their rec desk annual software contract. So really no significant change for them, except for with that rec desk, they do have a little bit of an increase in bank fees. And code compliance, we're really expecting no, no significant change for that department. That's it for the general fund revenues and expenditures. Thought this would be a good time to have questions before we move on to special revenues.
All right. I'm going to look and see if I see any hands popping up from any of my colleagues. Going once, twice. And all right, I think we're good to move forward, Angela.
Okay, great. So moving on to special revenue funds. So again, starting off for everyone else, just in case you don't know our special revenue funds. So special revenue funds are those funds that aren't general. These are specific funds that the government has restricted for a specific use to make sure that those revenues are used for that earmarked purpose. The special revenue fund type may be used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are legally restricted by the council or other legal entities or for policy specific purposes. So the city has special revenue funds and they're kind of managed by the independent, the different departments. As we talked about in the general fund, so we don't want to get them confused. But we all kind of have our own groups of funds that we kind of manage within them and kind of figure out what the fund should be used for, what projects they relate to. So for community development, they really oversee the in lieu inclusionary housing fund, bed tax fund, because those are derived from permit keys, linkage affordable housing and the special fund, which is special fund is a business license tax that goes right into that fund for other purposes. The public works has the traffic mitigation, park and loom, community development block grants, CDBG, also known as gas tax, MTC streets, community facilities district, RMRA and parks measure M. Maybe can't tell those are all there for public works as they relate, relate for the use of funds is for capital projects. Community facilities district is a little bit different and that's really goes to pay for expenditures for those new new developments and pieces for the additional cost to the city. The police department has their public safety fund as well as the K9 program. And the city manager has PAC grant, the South Sonoma Business Park Fund and the excess bond proceeds. So rather than going through all of the special revenue funds that are included within the packet, I just provided the highlights here and for each one of those, because there isn't really any significant changes for any of them over the year. They are being used for their special purposes, transfers out or are for the capital projects that they are planned for and/or the contracts they are planned for. And so it's really just our expectations of what the revenues coming in are going to be. And so I just kind of bringing in, into the highlights, any expectations for significant changes in those revenue influence. So for the special revenue funds, the revenues really, they're considered consistent with prior years. Except for CDBG, we don't have any current projects, so we don't have any budget for it. The gas tax revenues really are uncertain due to the volatility in gas pricing. We're expecting it to increase and we are expecting estimates, hopefully in the next week or so from Michael Coleman, he provides us really good estimates on where we should be projecting our gas tax. So he works really great on that. Traffic mitigation fund, we do have contributions being reduced due to updates and we're waiting for updates from the runner park piece for that traffic mitigation fund. The K9 program, as we discussed during last year's budget study session, it's now going to be fully funded by contributions from measure S and the general fund. So we're not going to be plugging in a number that we're expecting from contributions. It should just really be a transfer from general fund. If we get contributions, that's great. And South Sonoma Business Park, we refunded that in 1920. And so it does require a transfer out of the balance due back to the general fund due to previous balances that were they were, they were in lieu, so they were, sorry. They were due to the general fund from the South Sonoma Business Park previously and they weren't. So this is the payment back to the general fund from the South Sonoma Business Park Fund. The inclusionary housing, they have pending estimate numbers for the Jamie Lane project. So we're still waiting on where those numbers are actually going to come in. Community facilities district, so we do receive $322 transfer from the general fund in order to cover the expenses. And then we're expecting to pay that back to the general fund. Just like I said, for the South Sonoma Business Park, it's just a timing delay. So we need to repay that balance back to the general fund in 22, 23. The bed tax and parks measure M, we had to delay in the parks projects. And so we are expecting to use more funding and transfer that out to the capital projects in 22, 23. So here's the summary of the revenues expenditures and fund balances overall for the special revenue funds. So it just kind of shows the trends that we do want to, you know, you might see a decline in the fund balance, but really that just means we're using these special purpose funds for their purpose. So we're actually using what they're intended for, for that purpose, doing the projects, getting the consultants working on these strategic objectives, using these funds. So that's really what that, that shows in this line. So I'll go ahead and conclude and then we can open up to more questions again, but really we are proposing a balanced budget that maintains prudent and conservative budgeting levels. We will continue to closely monitor the operating revenues, ensure sufficient fund balance and cash flows that are going to be able to continue through operations. We have the operating reserve requirement and we'll make sure we meet and exceed that for our general fund. Our city staff will continue to update the council on any significant budgetary changes prior to any budget adoption. So again, if there's, we are anticipating some changes with the general fund, including those transfers in, transfers out pieces. And so that will be presented hopefully with the, with the capital projects in the next study session. So even though we're not specifically talking about the general fund, we will have that summary page with the transfers in, transfers out, so you can see it more holistically. So again, that would be an update we bring you at a later time. And city staff are just committed to exercising prudence and integrity and providing transparency and accountability for this budgetary purpose. So I'll open it up to questions again.
I will thank you. That's a lot to condense into just under an hour and yet somehow we managed to have done it. So I should appreciate that. So look to my colleagues and see if there's any general comments or questions from anybody. And I'm seeing, Councilmember Moore, I see your hand.
Fantastic job, Angela. And I count only eight times you said conservative. That's it.
I only got five, so you did better. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, thank you Angela, and thank you for answering all the questions and having everything in the presentation. I do have one question regarding the K9 program. You know, I was a strong proponent last year of us moving to us supporting that. But I noticed that now all of a sudden the budget has doubled. So could we talk about that a little bit? It wasn't really meant to kind of go, you know, I don't know how to say this, but you know, kind of like no cost barred, but I, I just was wondering what was driving that for it to double? While not a lot of money, I still want to make sure that we're, you know, being prudent with what it is we're doing.
Absolutely. So as a dog owner and someone with a couple of cats, vet bills are outrageous. The cost of, we talk about insurance, the cost of veterinary service has increased substantially. And then Remo also does require the training. So there was some training that was put off during COVID. And so now he is going back to training more frequently. And so that is the driver on those expenses.
Hey, thank you for that. Having just had my little pup at the vet today and got the vet bill, I can feel the pain. So I just wanted to be sure, you know, what we were doing there. So thank you for that.
All right. Let's take one more look at the list here. I see at the moment no other hands. Let's take a look and see if we have any attendees. And at the moment I am not seeing any attendees for public comments. I'll come back for final comments from the council. If anybody has one, and I see Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. And thank you Angela for a great presentation. I just had a comment about our, our work plan that we had talked about at our last strategic planning meeting. Believe there had been some discussion that we would bring that back. And I wanted to make sure that if we're not going to talk about that tonight, that it gets agendized for our May meeting, so we can have a sort of holistic discussion of the projects. I know that some of, many of the projects on the work plan that in list are funded by the general fund. So I wanted to make sure to bring that up tonight. And just make sure we're going to have a chance to talk about it in May.
Absolutely. Yes, that is an item we are planning on bringing back in May. Since we pinned down the goals and objectives this evening, we will bring back those items in May. And we'll discuss if there's any budget adjustments or requests at that point in time. But in regards to those projects that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Let me see here. And I believe, I'm not seeing any more hands from any of my colleagues. I believe that settles that for the moment. So my staff has anything further that they want to share with us tonight? I think we're good to go. We've had a chance to review this and let's see. With no further comments, then we would be adjourned at 6:55. So thank you very much, everybody. And thank you staff for the presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night all.
Good night.